Good evening. I'd like to call us to order for tonight's special meeting of the Minnetoka School Board for October 23rd, 2025. Let's stand and say the pledge of the flag.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Cameri, may I have a second?
Second.
Mike. All right. Any discussion, questions, additions? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have an agenda. One thing slightly out of the order here with us this evening, we have Associate Superintendent Amy Ledoux filling in for our absent Superintendent David Law. First item up for the special meeting is the approval of collective bargaining agreement with the MTA. Associate Superintendent Ledoux.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, as you know, every two years, we go through a highly collaborative process with our Minnetoka Teachers Association to negotiate an updated collective bargaining agreement. There we go. Tonight, our General Counsel and Executive Director of Human Resources. There we go. Okay. Tonight, our General Counsel and Executive Director of Human Resources, Angie Flowers, will provide a summary of that agreement. Ms. Flowers.
Thank you, Associate Superintendent Ledoux. Good evening, Mr. Chair and Board members. First of all, I'd like to start off with thanking both teams during this negotiations process, the district team and the MTA team. As Associate Superintendent Ledoux said, it was a very collaborative process, there was a lot of teamwork, and we think we got a lot of good things done for teachers and students. The financial settlement for teachers includes a 2.25% enhancement to the salary schedule in year one and a 2.2 enhancement to salary schedule in year two. That also will include and be on top of step movement in both years of the contract. And this contract will be for 2025 through 2027. In addition to the salary schedule enhancements, nurses were moved to our teacher's salary schedule, and that's pretty exciting for us. It's a big win for the nurses, it's a big win for the district, it allows us to be more competitive, as most nurse positions are on that same salary schedule. We also made improvements to insurance, and there was a big focus on family insurance and making that more affordable for our families. And there were other benefits as well that we improved, including retirement incentive. Tonight, I'm asking for your approval of the MTA and district collective bargaining agreement terms with the Minnetoka Teachers Association for 2025-2027.
Thank you again. I would entertain a motion to approve the agreement between the Minnetoka Teachers Association and the Minnetoka Public Schools for July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2027.
So moved.
Megan, may I have a second?
Second.
Chris? Any discussion, Board members?
I just have a question about a term that I noticed. There was an acronym on, let's see, this is, pardon me, okay, Section A, Subtitle 1, C dot 2, E S S T time.
Yes. Employee Sick and Safety Time.
Thank you.
The new or more recent law that gives more sick time and more eligibility for our employees to take off when they're ill or their family members.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Seeing no other discussion, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn this special meeting.
So moved.
Chris, may I have a second?
Second.
Cameri? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, we're adjourned. And now we'll shuffle to our spot for the study session.[332.31]
In kindergarten. First grade is also averaging a low class size between nineteen to twenty-three students. Second grade, the average is less than twenty-five students across the school buildings. Third grade average class sizes are less than twenty-five with the exception of Groblin, which averages a class size of twenty-seven students. Fourth grade ranges from twenty-six to thirty students and fifth grade ranges from twenty-two to twenty-nine with the most being on the lower end of that number. Bright Works is an organization that we always look to each year just to compare to see how we're doing compared with other districts. They they survey many districts, including our comparator districts, Eden Prairie, Wayzata, Hopkins, Eastern Carver County. And if you look at that chart, you'll see half of our average class sizes are less than Bright Works for twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six, with three buildings just being slightly higher. So we are, we're pleased with those numbers. Some are just like a point-three decimal higher. So we are, we're still in a good range. Moving on to middle school enrollment. MMW has stayed consistent. They have two students less this year and MME increased by forty-five from last year to this year. Total enrollment for the middle schools, twenty-six seventy-one. High school enrollment has officially surpassed thirty-six hundred students, coming in at thirty-six oh one. This was an increase of forty-eight students from last year. The high school remains very popular. Any questions on any of that before going on? Okay. Tonka Online and Navigator enrollment are next. The data that you see for Tonka Online, keep in mind that is our full-time students. It's not our students taking supplemental courses or extra credit and things like that. So it increased at all levels. Solid growth of full-time online students at the high school, increase of sixty-five students overall from last year to this year. Thirty-two at the high school, seventeen at middle, and sixteen at elementary. Looking at elementary, again, very steady with the largest increase at third grade, followed by fifth grade. Total of forty. Middle school, there was a slight drop at six, but significant increases at seventh and eighth, and we tend to see those increases as the grades get higher. Thirty-two students is what Tonka Online has increased by at the high school level, with the majority of those increases being at eleventh and twelfth grade. Anything on the high school or Tonka? Okay. The elementary Navigator program. Overall Navigator Navigator enrollment has a historical high with two-hundred-and-thirteen students in ten classrooms across second grade through fifth grade. This is an increase of ten students over last year's enrollment of two-hundred-and-three. Excelsior Navigator experienced a decrease, though we continue to encourage enrollment there. Their program is strong and solid. Some of that just has to do with location and start time, so we're still trying to get, get the word out about what's offered there with Navigator. And you'll see that scenic heights increased by nineteen students in their Navigator program. Moving on to immersion enrollment. District-wide Chinese immersion is at nine percent. That was a slight decrease by one percent. Spanish also decreased one percent from last year and is now at twenty-eight percent. Looking at the immersion versus English and how those compare, they've hovered at like sixty-forty split respectively for English and immersion. This year, you can see that it's sixty-three percent English and thirty-seven percent immersion, and immersion has experienced that two percent decrease from last year, whereas English increased by two percent. For elementary, district-wide Spanish immersion enrollment is twenty-three percent higher than Chinese immersion, which is typical in, given that we have four Spanish immersion schools and two Chinese immersion schools. English is still the largest at fifty-seven percent. Looking at middle school immersion, Chinese specifically, Chinese immersion at MME has experienced a slight decrease of nine students. MMW had a slight increase of four students. Overall, the data shows that both schools have steady enrollment in their programs, and it's just good to see that kids are continuing their education and that immersion experience. Spanish immersion at both middle schools increased twelve students at MME and two students at MMW. Total of four-hundred-and-ten this year. Looking at high school Chinese immersion, decreased by thirty-seven students from last year, and you'll also see that there's a decrease in Spanish immersion at the high school. This is because students take the AP exam, and when they pass that, they really do believe that they're proficient, talking, talking to the principals, the APs. Students believe, some of the students, the ones that are doing other things, that they are not only proficient, but they have more than enough because it's been such a well-rounded program. One of the other recent changes also, of course, is Vantage, Momentum, and the opportunities that they offer. So when, now they have a class period where they can just experience some other things, and they just have a lot of interest. So looking at Spanish high school, there was a decrease. We have thirty-nine less students, and again, just more opportunities to take other courses and participate in other activities, but still very strong enrollment. Yes?
Can I ask a question about the KEEV? Is this ratio of... Do you... Actually, or is it because students are hoping in? Or is it like very different? You may not understand, but do you have a report?
It might be a combination, but I believe it's more about what they're electing at the beginning when they enroll, so. Would you add anything different? Dr. Liddoo?
I would say that we do have, as you can see, our numbers increasing, so that is offsetting that. But we only have small numbers of students really moving from immersion to English during their elementary experience, so I would say it's the other factors that are probably playing into it more.
All right, moving on to just some information about our teachers and paras and what our hiring looked like this year. Starting with paraprofessionals. Ninety-six percent of our paraprofessional positions are filled, so we are super excited about that. We have hired forty new paraprofessionals this school year, two in early childhood, twenty-nine at the elementary level, seven at the secondary level, and two at sail. Right now, we have, of course, four percent of those positions to fill. Elementary, we have six openings, four part-time, two full-time, and at secondary, we have five openings. Please send us referrals if you have them. And now our teachers, I like, lastly, I like to share information about them and what this year's teachers look like. So the first day of school, we had one-hundred percent fill rate of the teaching positions, so we were able to start off strong, so we are proud of that. There have been some leaves since then, so we're not quite still there, but we're, we're covered. We hired fifty-three teachers. Eleven previously worked in Minnetonka Public Schools, so we were excited to welcome them back. Seven teachers have taught internationally, internationally. Seven are first-year teachers. They are averaging nine-point-eight years of teaching experience, which is pretty standard for us. We do get very experienced teachers. Twenty-eight have master's degrees and two have international degrees, and some of those international experiences include places like Taiwan and Poland, so very diverse backgrounds. The profile of the new teachers, eighteen elementary, twenty-seven secondary, one immersion, and seven related services, our psychologists, social workers, speak-language pathologists, counselors, and those positions. We are excited to continue serving our current and new skippers, and that's all I have for you. Questions?
Thank you. Board members, any questions or discussion? Chris?
And I think maybe we covered this a little bit the last time, so I think it was, what, two years ago or last year, we're at this time and had a really low kindergarten class, and we can see that rebounding nicely, but, I mean, a lot of the talk was across the state that kindergarten enrollment was down, and it, I don't know, do we have a feel for, is that coming back? Is, was it just a blip? Or, you know, I mean, we start getting kindergarten classes that are that big all the way through, right? There's going to be different planning, good things, but, you know, that's a, a pretty big class coming through, so.
Yeah, I'm not sure, but I know that for Minnetonka, there was a lot of proactive and concerted efforts and working with school buildings and, you know, and also, I believe, like the, the deadlines were moved up or actually communicated more earlier so people could enroll earlier versus, you know, if people are taking a long time to enroll, such as January, then some of those spots are already taken. So I, I think a lot of it was really just the groundwork.
The West Metro did see increases overall, and so is it more movement this direction as well as people choosing schools?
All right, Megan?
One question I've been getting recently is about the comparison in class sizes between English and immersion, mostly, I think, at the elementary level. Do you have any inkling for if the class sizes are pretty comparable or if there is actually a discrepancy?
I haven't looked at that data. I wouldn't know offhand. Would you, Dr. Liddoo? Yeah?
I haven't looked at it recently, but I think as we looked across the board, we felt it was pretty comparable. We know that in kindergarten, we often start a little higher in immersion because it allows for some attrition if there is some and keeps class sizes strong. But overall, I think it just really has to do with where residents land and programs, families choose. I don't think there's a consistent pattern.
But happy to pull that data and get it to you. I can do that.
Dan?
I, I also seem to remember that, like on the employment side, like we had a lot more vacancies in recent years and trouble filling positions. Do we think it's where we, we've just become a more attractive place to work, or we've reduced employee attrition, or both? Do you have any idea?
The market is getting better, the, you know, for jobs and employers, so that's definitely a trend that's increasing. Also, we, of course, we, we didn't, we just didn't have as many openings, given our financial situation currently, but I'd say last year, before the first day of school, the couple weeks out, I think we had like four teacher openings, and we were able to get those filled and get someone in there by the first day of school or, or that week, but we had coverage. So it is an attractive district, so we're always getting a good amount of candidates, but where we still struggle is special education because those teachers are so sought after. So I think that's just a challenge that the whole state has.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you very much for that report.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, we have a nutrition services update. Ms. Liddoo?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the past three years, we've had a district goal that's included the area of nutrition services. Initially, this focused on the implementation of the state-funded breakfast and lunch program. Our program, though, has evolved to focus on ensuring that we're providing those highest quality meals possible for our students each day. I'm pleased to report that our nutrition services team has done an exceptional job of being both innovative and really just having an approach that is not only meeting these goals, I think it's really exceeded them. Tonight, we're excited to have both our executive director of finance and operations, Paul Bourgeois, and the director of nutrition services, Kristin Turnblad, here to provide us with an update about the great work happening in our nutrition services.
Thank you, Associate Superintendent, members of the board. And I'm just here, actually, as a start, starting, and Kristin's going to take the baton. There's a metaphor in the way she's been doing the job too for, in that, but I just want to say, one of the things in my position that I'm really fortunate, it's like a gift to me, is I have really excellent staff, people that I get to work with every day, and Kristin is one of those. She's the best of the best. She's taken the baton from Jane Bender, and the last fifteen months has done a lot of amazing things, and I think you're going to be pleased with what she's going to be able to relate to you today. And so I just want to thank you for all the good work you've been doing, and I know she's going to do good work for a long time, too.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Chair and members of the board, thank you for having me tonight. I wanted to start off the evening just talking about staffing, where we're at so far this school year. Our full staff is considered sixty-two members in nutrition services. We are currently, as of today, at fifty-six staff. We are almost at ninety percent fully staffed. We have been busy over the past summer. We hired twelve new staff to start out this school year. So all of our elementary schools are staffed. We have one opening at a middle school, and then we have four, five positions at the high school. Of those positions, we're covered for the program that we're offering currently at the high school, and those additional positions will just help us expand what we're already doing. Of that, of our staff, of those fifty-six staff, thirty-seven of them are parents of the district, whether it's current students, whether it's students that have already graduated with us. We also have some grandparents. Their kids didn't go to our district, but their grandkids do, and so they wanted to join in on the fun and see their grandkids at lunch. So as a USDA breakfast and lunch program, we are required to provide training for our staff, training in civil rights as well as what we call offer versus serve, which is offering the students five components of, or five items of each meal for breakfast and lunch, and then having the students choose instead of us putting it on the plate for them. So that's the difference between offer versus serve. This year, with offer versus serve, I wanted to add a fun aspect to it because you can look at a PowerPoint for six hours a day, but that's not really how we operate, right? We're on our feet, we're always engaging with students, serving food, moving, so we actually played Jeopardy. We broke out onto groups, everyone got to meet new people from other buildings, which was a great opportunity to collaborate, see how others do things, played some Jeopardy, learning about offer versus serve, and then later on in the day, we used our knowledge and we actually played Plinko. That's what the left picture is, and they, each team got to, you know, drop the little Plinko chips, which landed on food items. They used those food items to then build a what is a reimbursable meal, meaning that we can get the funding for that meal. They got to create meals and then present them kid-friendly ideas, too, that we could bring back for menus this year. When I ended the workshop with the staff this past August, my motto this year was, let us have a great year. Instead of let us, I use the word lettuce. It's food, lettuce, you know. And I thought it was a great idea this year to try something different for our team leaders' meetings. We usually get together about once a month. Sometimes it ends up being, you know, only seven times in a school year, just depending on the calendar, and we usually just talk about what they all need to hear or, you know, what's going well, what's not going well, talk through some new menu items. Are we having trouble cooking, you know, the vegetables? How can we make it more appealing to students? Troubleshoot. This year, I decided to kind of build a growth leadership opportunity for them to actually train them using each letter of lettuce stands for each meeting. And so for the first one, when we met for L, it's lead, we actually collaborated together and came up with a manager's manual. It's how to order, right? Like, wake up one day and forget how to, oh, do I need to log in here or am I going here? Just kind of helping them be able to work autonomously in the kitchens and troubleshoot on their own instead of always, you know, oh, I have to call someone or, oh, I have to do this. So working together, got their input, what, you know, are their top hiccups that they experience so that we can put it all together in a manual. They don't know the rest of the letters yet, so this is just a sneak peek for everyone. All right, so participation. Traditionally, in the month of September, it's always a lower participation rate for nutrition service programs. Students are getting back into routines. You have the new kindergartners coming. There's so much new for them that lunches, maybe they just want to do a home lunch. It's more friendly, comforting to them. When we built menus last year, so we have to build menus, we started in March of last school year, just to be able to have the food in for September, but when we were building menus, I had an idea to take the top nine student favorite meals of last school year and use those for the first two weeks of school this year, bringing their favorites in to try to entice them, you know, to eat with us. Well, as you can see, under the lunch category, for elementary, we increased three percent over last year. Middle schools, we increased one percent, and then the high school, we actually increased five percent. We are hitting some record numbers at the high school with the meals that we're serving. They're shaking their heads. Yeah, they're excited. We did see a slight decrease in breakfast. We have tried new menu items with breakfast, bringing in some things they might see at home, whether it's the that's-it, fruit bars, Crunchables, applesauce pouches, that friendly, those friendly items, just haven't quite found that, what word am I looking for? Haven't quite found the perfect blend or the perfect mix for breakfast. So this next screen looks very busy, but these are all of the new menus, items that we have done this school year. There are three words in there, three menu items that are actually a sneak peek as to the new menu for November. They are the chicken enchilada empanadas, the cheeseburger empanadas, and then there's a cheese empanada, which would be our meatless option that day. These menu items were, have actually been served at all schools in the district. So last year, we started just at the high school, introducing new items, and then would trickle it down. This year, we started with all schools experiencing all the new items together, which has worked, excuse me, very well. So empanadas is the menu item for November. We have a new vendor for meatless products to have, they call it kickin', kickin' patties, kickin' nuggets, kickin' tenders, kickin' spicy patty, meatless, meatless items for entrees. I'm pointing out two items. The first one is the yogurt parfaits. Elementary students love to do a build-your-own, make-it-creative, build-your-own meal, so we did a bento box, offering it every other week on Mondays with a hot item, so whether it's French toast sticks or pancakes. We're doing yogurt parfaits, currently doing strawberries, also looking at bringing in maybe some other fruits to experiment with those, see what they like. But you can see she really enjoyed building her yogurt parfait. And then the other new exciting item was chicken wings this year. We have only done that one at the high school, but it went over very well. In fact, we just had it for the second time last Monday, and we did over two thousand servings. So a serving, I think, is like seven wings, so that's a lot of wings. But they had five different sauce options to choose from, trying, you know, to mimic their favorites. They can pick and choose what they'd like. Last year, we spent a lot of time creating a lot of marketing initiatives, and we continued those this year. However, we have added new things to them. So continuing with our Instagram account, we're up to, I think it's a little over three hundred or almost three hundred followers, so we're continuing to grow at a slow rate. We're still doing our newsletter, which is a great way to highlight, showcase some of the things we're doing in our department that month or what students can, are experiencing at school, parents can hear about it. The website is still being kept up to date with the help of communications team and always having the most up-to-date information for parents. We're also doing flyers, morning announcements, and then we also have our menu app, Nutrislice, which is what the parents use or students to look at menus. I tried something new this year. I pre-planned the entire school year as a marketing calendar, which includes all of our Instagram posts, which at least are twice a week, sometimes three, sometimes more, just depending on what it is. Also include all of our dates for sampling with the students as well as newsletters. So we already talked about and figured out what each month newsletter was going to be, which corresponded with all of the Instagram posts. It has been a great tool to have that already laid out to know what's coming up, and it will be continued. So with Instagram Tonka Fresh, we recently celebrated National School Lunch Week. It was a pass, the passport into school lunch, so we showcased different areas, traveling to different countries of the different foods that we offer to students. That theme is actually not, I can't take credit for that one. That is the School Nutrition Association. They come up with a theme every year, and then we just did a little Tonka Fresh twist on it. We also did a new series this summer, since it's our first summer with Instagram. We did a behind-the-scenes look in the kitchens. So each week, we were in a different kitchen, showing what serving lines look like, the storage rooms, the coolers, the freezers, highlighting each kitchen just so that parents could kind of have that behind-the-scenes look. Then in addition to that, we also did a nutrition post, so breaking down, you know, school meal standards, talking about sugars, talking about sodium, different kind of nutrition posts throughout the year or without the summer. Then we did a back-to-school series. So we took our parent communication welcome-back letter, and we broke it down into a daily series, kind of detailing each one of, you know, what to expect when you're coming to lunch, what to expect when you're coming to breakfast, how to load money in an account, offering the opportunities to apply for the free and reduced meals program. What does that mean? What kind of benefits come along with that? Just a bunch of different commonly asked questions, trying to, again, get it out in a different format for parents. Nutrislice menus, so we have not changed that program. It's working very well as far as the software. They keep doing updates. We keep updating it with pictures. We have ingredients available on there, allergens, all the nutrition facts. We have them available two weeks ahead of time. The nurses in the schools love it because there is a carb count on it, so it will actually provide them the counts for if they're needing to disperse insulin. We also have the Tonka Fresh food truck. It debuted in the homecoming parade this year. I was driving the truck. It was a very fast-paced parade, but it was very fun. All the little kids were asking for the horn, so it was like the horn every couple, I don't know, feet, it felt like, but it was very fun, exciting. The kids are excited. We have restructured the manager position at the high school to bring it into a co-manager position, where one of the managers is focusing on à la carte catering as well as the food truck. So that will allow us to be able to expand our offering for the spring to make sure it's brought to all schools with the students. Student voice, I think that's the most important reason why we're all here, is the students. Student voice in sampling through the surveys and through our student groups. With taste testing, we are currently starting with candy corn vegetable blend. It has parsnips, butternut squash, turnips, and carrots. It's a traditional favorite candy is candy corn, so it's the fresh, healthy, spin nutritious. So far, the students... So far, the students are liking it, and we have many more schools to visit. It's very good roasted, just with olive oil, nothing else on it. February, we're going to try kale. We don't know yet if we're going to do kale chips, or just kale by itself, kind of might do both, just because then they can see the different, how it's baked. And then in April, we're looking at doing tahin. So that is a common, commonly known spice. Looking to do it on watermelon, and maybe even doing it as a dip for some vegetables, like celery and carrot sticks, so. After my presentation last school year, I talked about meeting with students at elementary schools and letting them create menus. Those menus did debut last year. I'm happy to report that most of the items that they came up with are actually still on the menu this school year, which is really cool to see. And not only just at the elementary schools, but they're also at middle schools and high schools. So those, those little kids came up with some great ideas that we have implemented across the board. This year, for November, we're going to be doing focus groups with East, the Middle School East and Middle School West students, kind of giving them a taste test. So we have a breadstick, a garlic breadstick. We have several different vendors. Which one do they like? They're all whole grain, they all have like that buttery garlic flavoring to them, but which one do they like better? Giving them the opportunity to kind of see the variety, and then pick which one they like. And then in the spring, we'll be at the other three schools, Grove and Minnewash to scenic heights, working with students that the principals select for us to meet with, developing menus, and then helping them market and advertise and showcase those to their peers. It'll be at all elementary schools. The nutrition services, oops, sorry, the Nutrition Services Advisory Committee. At the meeting, at the end of the year last year, we decided to try two meetings for this school year. Our first one is coming up in mid-November, and then we have one scheduled for April. We also have sampling opportunities sprinkled throughout the year, too, so that they can get into the kitchens and see the kids. And then also, we're very open to if we need to have another meeting, or if something comes up, to being able to schedule another meeting, too. So staff appreciation. The district had a thank you for child nutrition staff, student-centered excellence, and then I put a little snippet of some of the signs that our staff got to receive in the kitchens. At the elementary schools, even middle schools and high schools, our staff were appreciated. It was, it's very, brings tears to their eyes, just to be able, you know, they're being noticed, right? So it was a fun way to celebrate them. We have been doing a lot of celebrations already this school year. We celebrated the Great Apple Crunch. Everyone got to bite into a delicious locally grown apple. We also did that for the wellness committee, too, for staff. And then we also celebrated the Hispanic Heritage Month. We brought chicken mole in. It is free of the top nine allergies, so it's a little different than maybe what you have at home, but we showcased that menu on our nacho days. We also celebrated Rosh Hashanah with apples and honey. And then we just celebrated yesterday Unity Day. All staff got a orange apron this year, so everyone was dressed in orange. Some staff even did orange hats, orange sneakers, they took it a whole nother level, but it was just cool to see the sea of orange along with all of the students as well. And that's the end of my presentation. Thanks for having me tonight.
Thank you very much for the report. Camry.
Kristen, you guys are killing it.
Thank you.
It's awesome.
Thank you.
It's just, I love, I love reading the newsletters, and the food that we get to taste is fantastic, so thank you. And I know I'm probably speaking on behalf of the board, but we've gotten so many appreciative emails from parents regarding Rosh Hashanah, and other emails about, was it just Rosh Hashanah? About the food that was provided? So I think that's been just really noticeable in the community as well.
Thank you.
So I wanted to bring that to your attention as a thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Just from the student perspective.
Yeah.
We have seen, obviously, a dramatic increase in the quality of food over the past couple of years. And it's fun, because you actually get excited for what you're going to eat at lunch. And it's not just an opportunity to talk to friends, but it's a time to eat some great food, too.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Just to add on to that, I also really appreciate the diversification of the menu. I think it makes it really fun every day to go to lunch. Personally, I'm a big fan of the chicken wings, so.
Good.
Thank you.
Sally.
Okay, I'm waiting for my fan badge on the Tonka Fresh Instagram page.
Okay.
Because I love, so, well, it's just kind of, it's joyful, right? It's, it's really fun to watch, and I really appreciated just this week the Unity Day, because what you didn't mention was, in addition to the orange aprons, that the menu was orange.
Yes, yes.
Which, and what I really appreciated about that is, that really was fun and engaging, I'm sure. It was probably delightful for the students to get to participate in that, and I just think, you know, no wonder you see your numbers going up, because you're making lunch fun.
Yep, that's the goal.
Thank you. I do have a question about, so you talked about the distinction between offer versus serve.
Yes.
Right? And I have been in cafeterias before and watched what happens at the end of the lunch, and what does not get consumed, so I assume that is having some impact? What do we know about that?
So, with the requirements, we'll talk lunch, because that's five components that are offered. So that is a grain, a protein, milk, fruit, and a vegetable. Of those five items, they have to take three, and of those three items, they have to have a fruit or vegetable. And that is in order to get the free meal. So that is the requirement of the USDA, A, to get the reimbursement, but then also of the state to get the free from the state.
Okay.
We have, we have both funding sources.
So naturally, that we are having a decrease in waste?
Yes.
So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Board members, anyone else? Megan.
I would echo the increased diversity has been really great, and I, I've heard from multiple parents, like, that their student would never have tried it at home, but because they see other people trying it, they came home and they were like, I really like samosas, or, you know, whatever that they maybe wouldn't have tried otherwise, so I think that's really cool. One feedback piece around the breakfast. Anecdotally, what I've heard from my own children is that some of the requirements around timing and/or where they can eat have changed for breakfasts. And so, it sounds like a lot of students are having trouble accessing them. And like, my own kids are reporting that they, they eat breakfast, they usually eat first breakfast and second breakfast, but they've been eating more first breakfast because they don't know if they're going to have time to get breakfast at school. So that's just a feedback piece. I don't know if that's true at all the buildings, but that's been consistent this year for my kids compared to last year, so just something to consider.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, Dan.
I'm just going to echo a lot of what was already said, but I think that's been a lot of awesome work that's been done in this department. And just to bring it back to our board goals, I mean, talking about excellence in well-being and inclusion and belonging, like, just being, being able to do that with our food items and recognize various people in the communities and their, their needs and their wants, it's just been a very, very positive feedback that we've gotten.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have one follow-up, and I don't know if this is a dumb question, but it never stopped me before.
There's no such thing as a dumb question.
We'll see. Given the, the nature of the funding for, for our meals, and the fact that the US government is currently shut down, is there an impact from that shutdown? Do we anticipate at some point there being an impact?
We have been told that our funding for meals is secured for September and October reimbursement. Beyond that, as far as reimbursement goes, I don't have an answer on that, but I can get back to you. But as far as what our fund or our fund balance has, we would be able to continue operation as it is.
Okay. Thank you. And thanks for the wonderful report.
Thank you.
All right.
You're welcome.
Nothing else, we will move on to the last item on our agenda, is an update on outstanding bonds and certificates of participation. Dr. Ladue.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, as a reminder to our community, long-term financial stability and facilities that meet the current and future needs of our students are also a part of our board goals. Tonight, Executive Director of Finance and Operations, Paul Bourgeois, will provide an update on the various bond issues of the district, the annual bond payments on the outstanding principal, and a look at current and future levels of outstanding bonds as they're paid off over time. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Bourgeois.
As I work on casting here. Hmm, interesting. Works every time. Okay, doesn't want to do it. All right, how about this? No, I got it, I got it. There we go. Long as it doesn't decline me. Yeah. There we go. All right. Thank you for having me again. This is something that we do approximately once a year, because our finances are kind of the bedrock on which everything else sits and rests, and no money, no mission, right? So, we're going to be going through, just background and, and status of our bonds outstanding and our fiscal '26 activity, and we're going to just estimate the future a little bit in terms of, you know, what happens after November 4th in the near term. But our facilities, all of our bonds are related to our facilities, and this is a chart of how our, our facilities were built over, over the decades. So you can see that we have 27 years of use, about 83%. And so if you put that in terms of your own house, you know, you have a lot of things that need to be replaced, right? And then about 58 years of use gets us over a million, so almost six decades of use of about a million square feet, and almost 70 years of use of another 500,000 square feet. So, we actually put a lot of time and effort and dollars into making sure that our buildings, they got good bones and that they're, they're built to last for the long term. And I just always throw this fiduciary thing in here, we're all fiduciaries, but it's always good to just think about that, because we try to do the right thing for our public for the long term. So, back in, in 2007, our school district was levying about $10 million a year in bond debt payments and long-term, long-term maintenance project on a pay-as-you-go basis. And a lot of deferred maintenance had built up, so they were chipping away, but they weren't able to get ahead. And so, we needed a lot of work to basically update them for the next 50 or 60 years. So beginning in 2008, we basically moved to bonding for long-term maintenance, because we're replacing components that would last, you know, 25, 30, 40, 45, 50 years. And so you spread that payment out, that's kind of like what they do with the electric companies, used to work in the utility industry, and in the utility industry, if you're building a new power plant, they stretch the payments out over, over 30 to 40 years, because that way ratepayers who are getting the benefit of it will pay for it, versus the current ratepayers getting a big giant spike, right? And we do the same thing, that's what bonds do. It, it basically allows for an improvement, and then generations pay for it over the life of the, of the facility, but also over the, the generations that are getting the benefit of that facility. So I kind of went through this, this slide already, but it, so one of the things that we can do to also keep overall annual payments approximately flat, we can, you know, we can work on lowering interest rates. We've got a bunch of bonds that are, are really on the cusp of being able to, to be refinanced if the interest rates start, keep dropping, the 10-year Treasury is below 4% for the first time in a number of years, so that, there might be some opportunities there, and we're watching that. But we also look to lower payments if we need to create capacity for a future bond. And we also work on net present value savings, depending on the situation. So, we don't just take, sell the bond and put it on the shelf, we basically look at ways to improve, improve the payments in one way or another for the public when, when an opportunity comes up. So, we also did a lot of facility improvements from July 1st, 2007, through basically this year, about $231 million in facilities-related improvements. And we've done these with general obligation long-term facility maintenance bonds, about 147 million. We've done about $92 million in what's called certificates of participation. It's a little bit different, nuanced way to talk about a bond that you use to do a building addition. And we've built classrooms, gyms, music rooms, science rooms, specialist, small group rooms, lots of those. Bought land, added a lot of parking lots. We've also done 50 refunding bonds, so we've done basically over, over 110 bonds. This is, I haven't updated this picture, but the, the lower level would go a little bit further to the right, but I keep those handy. It's kind of old school, but I literally can, if I need to look at a bond, I can go in there and get what I need faster than I can log in, wait for the authenticator to come up, and then get authentication, so. But what have we gotten out of this investment? We've gotten capacity for our additional students to generate revenue for programs that serve all students. And we've really pretty much eliminated deferred maintenance. There's always something to fix, but for the most part, we are just as current as you could possibly get. The other thing is that we, we manage construction in-house, and, and over that 231 million, it's about $8.9 million of construction management fees that we've avoided, so we just plow that back into the building, buildings. This is actually a list, I keep a cumulative list, and I update it every year. So after, as of summer of 2025, we've actually, I, I'm not going to read them all off, but 151 classrooms, 77 small group rooms, five elementary schools. We've got a lot of kitchen expansions. We built 22 parking lots expansions, it's not enough yet, but we keep working on that. We rebuilt, actually, we built and rebuilt all, basically built new 22 tennis courts, the two middle schools and the high schools. And we built three aviation training areas. This is an interesting chart, and I have it in here, because had we not done any of that, our school district would have basically had the capacity to grow to about 8,200 students. And then we would have topped out, because we'd have been full with the capacity we had. But we've added about 370,000 square feet to be able to provide additional space. And if I'd have been smart, I'd have put, I'd have put a, a picture of the Golden Gate Bridge in here as a metaphor, because if you think about education, a K-12 school system as being able to take kids from kindergarten on one side to bridge the gap of ignorance or whatever, and go to the, and get to graduation on the other side, kind of like going from San Francisco to Sausalito, right over the Golden Gate. You know, the, the bridge piers, those two things, two big towers that hold everything up, without those, nothing else happens. You need the space. And so we've invested in the space, and then the bridge deck is the programs that we've been able to build across, and the cars are the kids zipping across going to graduation, you know? I mean, so you need all those components, and so, that's what we did, is, is we basically made possible with 51 major facility projects, large enough to warrant a dedication plaque. And we've been able to create enough space to actually provide student growth up to 11,288 through '24, '25, and now we're up to about 11,500 FY '26. The, that also then resulted in a virtuous cycle of, we didn't have to go through budget reductions. This is a historical track since 1996, when some funding levels changed, and there were constant budget reductions or deficit spendings. But once we got on the track of student growth and improved programs and people wanting to come to our district, we went on an 18-year run of no budget reductions. We've been asking for a little bit of help from the legislature with operating reform capacity since 2017. They haven't approved anything yet, but we keep knocking on the door, right? So we've had some budget reductions the last couple of years, but that 18-year run was, was quite a streak compared to what every other district around us would have been going through. So, this is a long list of long-term facilities maintenance, rebuilding for 2070, room unit ventilator systems, that's basically HVAC. We've, basically, we were able, when, when I started here, we had, the high schools air-conditioned, and the middle schools were air-conditioned in the media center wings, and then there was a bunch of window air-conditioners at, at different places around, and we've been chipping away, chipping away. And this year, we finally, at the, with the last rooms at the middle schools and some at Minnewash, we are actually at 100% climate-controlled with heating ventilation and air conditioning across, across the district. But just a lot of things that we've done, so it just gives you an idea of what it takes to keep a building up. But our bonding strategy, we've kept our facility levees relatively flat. You know, the, the 51 building projects that we had, we've done that, it's about $170 million worth in, with a revenue stream of 4.5 million a year, so we just kind of kept working everything and squeezing another payment out to do another project. So, but we kind of built, have done this major rebuilding over about 20 years, which is kind of when a lot of, a lot of the district's facilities were built during the post-war baby boom. So, again, we'll always keep doing things, you know, having something to do, you have to do roofing and paving. to do roofing and paving in Minnesota, but about $1,870,000 square feet to keep doing. And it's a prudent course of action though, because our replacement cost is $925 million to tear down and rebuild 1,870,000 square feet. So, you know, putting a little bit of money into it every year is very, it's prudent. It's a good fiduciary act. This is our long-term maintenance facilities history, and you can see through fiscal '26, which was just this past summer, most of the work was done. We've been, you know, pushing through, kind of completing a lot of things. We've got one more year where it's a little bit higher, although we may be able to actually pare that down a bit. And then after that, it gets into more of the kind of just steady roofing and paving and some smaller projects going forward. So dollar amounts. Our total current outstanding general obligation and certificate of participation par value is about $189 million. And of that amount, $159 million is to be paid back over time by our property taxpayers. So the general obligation debt levy is $111,625,000. And actually, with the payment that we are, so that's what it will be on June 30th of 2026. With the payment that we're making on February 2nd, we're actually paying, making the last payment on the bonds that were issued after the last building bond referendum on April 23rd, 1996. So all that debt there that you see is related to the rebuilding of the district for the next 50 years with long-term facility maintenance bonds. Then we also have a post-employment benefit trust that we actually, we bonded for, funded back in 2008, 2009, when there was an opportunity to do so. And there's about $15 million of those original funding bonds left to be paid out. They matured the last payment in 2038. But the interesting thing about that is those bonds were able to, the bond proceeds were able to be invested and then pulled out annually to pay for post-employment retirement benefits that had been negotiated, they had to be capped off as of 2002, but they had been negotiated prior to 2002. And if you, and we've actually pulled $21 million out of that fund. And if you, basically, if we hadn't been doing that and paying for that out of the general fund instead, our actual general fund fund balance wouldn't be there. So it's been a really good way, for a good addition to, in essence, the revenue stream of the district by being able to cover that, those long-term liabilities related to post-employment benefits. Then there's other funding sources. We have about $25 million of bonds paid from an ongoing source called operating capital. We have $2.2 million that we just issued in five-year notes to rebuild our network infrastructure this past summer. Community education, they pay off bonds that were issued back in 2008, 2009 to build the pool, the main pool at, you know, our aquatic center. And then also, we've had preschool additions. So we've used, paid bonds back there, or issued bonds back in those days to add some preschool additions as we were looking at growing the district and adding capacity for more preschool students. And fees are basically paying those off, as well as the Tonka Dome. And the Tonka Dome is actually going to get a new Tonka Dome roof this year, but there's still three years' worth of bonds left to pay off in December of 2028, which is fiscal '29. So who pays this off? We are a unique school district in that we have very little commercial and industrial. You know, we have downtown Excelsior and the 101 and 7 kind of complex and a few other things, a little bit up in Deep Haven and up near Groveland School and things like that. But we don't have, you know, a big, like, you know, shirt, was it Sherway or, I'm sorry, Safeway, you know, warehouses and Cargill offices and things like that, that some of our other surrounding districts have to share in the property tax burden. So basically, residential parcels are about 92% of the whole thing. There's about, in terms of property value, and that's made up of residential and then homestead residential, which is people who are residents of other states who still have their house here. And they come back, and they use summer as a verb, they summer up in Minnesota. So during fiscal year 2026, the only thing that we've done is issue some long-term facility maintenance bonds. And that's, those are actually going to fund the projects we're doing for summer 2027. You've been able to, I'm sorry, in summer '26 for fiscal '27, and you've been approving the bids that we've been opening. Refunding activity, we are just, we're like racehorses at the Kentucky Derby waiting to get let out of the gate. We're waiting for the rates to drop. The Fed is hopefully going to drop some rates some more next week, and again in December. And as those things edge down, some of our bonds are going to be in a situation where we can refund them at a lower rate and drop payments and do some of those things. So our eye is on all of those, and we're going to strike when, you know, when the gate gets lifted, we're going to run. This is a distribution of the interest rates of our outstanding bond issues that we currently have. So we've actually done really reasonable rates, you know, for the most part over the years. And in the 2010s, when we did a lot of the work constructing the district, we, you know, the interest rates were relatively low. And I'm going to talk fast because it says my battery's running low, even though I had this thing plugged in all day. And so we've got a number of bond issues, you know, 15 in the 3% range, but most of them are below. Couple on the far right are just the, you know, ones that we've issued more recently when rates are a little bit higher, but still, still reasonable compared to some of the days before that, in 1990s and 2000s. This is a list of all of our bonds, the 111 million. This is what our payment schedule looks like. And you can kind of see how we're going to basically layer in, if we do have a successful bond referendum, I say if, we never count anything before it's happened. But if we do, we're going to be able to layer everything in so to keep the general obligation tax payments level. And that's what the retirement schedule looks like. So this is our lease purchase levy, outstanding bonds. We've got about $32.7 million. And that's paid out of $212 per student levy every year that generates about $2.5 million. But that's a flat levy, just stays basically pretty flat. It can't, well, it's $212 or the amount of your bond payments, whichever is less. And so we have that pretty much covered. We have, this is our schedule that we're looking at, but some of the, one of the bonds we're looking at restructuring is that one in green, so that we can keep dropping that down below the $2.5 million level. But, you know, we have a few years to go before that happens, but if we can do it now, we'll do it now. That's that reduction or schedule of payments. This is our outstanding lease purchases from operating capital, and this is a revenue stream of about $130 per student that we get no matter what. And we can use it on a variety of things. One of the things we can use is to actually pay for some of the building projects that we built the district with. And, you know, we can buy lawnmowers, we can buy books, we can buy computers, we can buy all kinds of stuff with this. But we, because we have our capital projects technology fund, we actually are able to utilize more of this to about $2 million you'd make payments. So that's what those look like, and we keep staying under our $2 million target, and that's where that goes. Capital projects technology, infrastructure-related, we've got $2.2 million there. We have the pool addition and community ed additions at about $1.3 million each. They just steadily get paid off. The dome will be paid off in three years. That's what those look like. And that's the retirement schedule. And then we have our OPEB levy, and I actually have some other ones on here, because this is just an example of how we restructured. We initially sold bonds at 6.83 and 6.24. We restructured those down to 5.05, then we restructured them down to 3.01, then we restructured down to 2.93 and 1.64. So that's what that debt retirement schedule looks like. So I just always want to toot our horn in this regard. There's three school districts in Minnesota that are currently rated AAA, which is highest bond rating you can get. There's four school districts in Minnesota all the time that got one. I was at Rochester when we were able to do that in Minnetoka, so I'm just glad to be able to have the opportunity to do that at both places, because you need school boards to actually run a really tight ship to be able to do that. This is just excerpts from a 2003 rating write-up about factors that can lead to an upgrade. Well, we can't get an upgrade because we're at the highest level of bonding. Factors that could lead to a downgrade, if we have a weakening of the tax base or resident incomes, that's not likely. Reserves or liquidity, we have to keep balancing our budget. Or material increases to the debt burden or unfunded retirement liabilities. And, but our pending bond issue is not a material item in that regard, because we are still well under what the, something is called a statutory debt limit, where in theory, this district could issue as much as $1.5 billion. And we're never going to get close to that. So just estimating the futures of other bonds, you know, we continually valued savings for, and restructuring for call dates. So we'll see how that goes. We have a couple larger projects yet, the cooling tower at the high school for our conditioning, and the ice-making equipment for the ice skating rink at Pago. That's going to be in the latter portion of the 2030s though, because that was built in 2001, and has a 40-year lifespan. And we have spare parts, and we also have a whole actually lock-and-keyed area at our vendor who maintains the system for us of a refrigerant called R22, which is not made anymore, but we sock stuff away so that we could continue to use it until the end of the useful lifespan. So, you know, we've added capacity, momentum addition at the district high school. Tasha Pago basically gave about 45 students for momentum classes, Vantage Momentum, 300 student capacity there. We have the Minnetoka Education Center. It can be used for a lot of other things. It's kind of like a Swiss Army knife of a building. So there's a lot of things that are possible in the future to keep housing programs as we develop new ones and come up with other innovative ideas. And then finally, this is, this is just a chart, but it's not, it's the best I could do with the data available. And this shows our $189 million versus all the districts surrounding us. And of course, you have everything from Orano at 2,934 students or whatever they are, up to Osseo at 20,0873. So there's different levels. But from what you can see is, is our bond, our bonding level is reasonable compared to the districts around us. We're not an outlier in any way. Again, the tall one there, $389 million, that is Osseo, and they're, you know, basically double our size, and they just had a bunch of major bond issues and they're building schools. We, I know Hopkins is going out for $140 million on this referendum election on November 4th. And, you know, so even if our referendum does pass, we still won't necessarily, we won't be an outlier at all. In fact, we're, and again, we're going to layer our bonds in. So there'll be $5 million that would be added to our current level of debt. And then the next $50 million is going to actually be pushed out a couple of, about a year. And then that, the payments actually are going to start in two years so that we can layer in those payments, you know, on that chart that we had, where we showed how, you know, the debts would be retired. So there's, and there's also a lot of different ways to compare this data, just like there is with student data and student performance data and all that. And so one of the things that we annually do at the Finance Advisory Committee, and sometimes we bring it to the board, sometimes we don't, but we've just got, we'll be getting the FY25 audits posted to everybody's, all these local districts' websites. And then we'll be able to get FY25 comparative data related to a lot of their finances. Again, just to kind of see where we fit in kind of a local peer group. And we're always, you know, in the middle, you know, thereabouts. But we'll be bringing that forward at Finance Advisory and then probably to the school board at a future date. So that's it in a nutshell. But these, like I said, it's, these are the peers of the bridge, so we're just trying as best we can to keep them solid and stable. So those students in their cars can zip across to graduation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bourgeois. Would not be a Paul Bourgeois report without a fantastic metaphor, so we appreciate that. Board members, any questions? Chris?
Just two quick comments. Could you go back to your slide 33? If you have battery enough to do that. And just for those watching, it's really a great example of the wizardry of Mr. Bourgeois and his team is really looking at this. And you look at how many bites at the apple they came, they look at this, and, you know, I've been a part of a lot of these, so I've seen this over a lot of years, and how you are tirelessly always looking for ways to improve our financial position. And so being able to do what we're able to do with such a minimum, minimal impact to our community and a maximum impact for our students and staff is amazing. And this is some of the nuts and bolts things. These are some of the big things, and all the way down to the small things. And so just want to say thank you and appreciate what you and your team do.
I mentioned you, and working with Kristen and others, I work with really great people, but we're all committed to the mission because we know that what we do is supporting what makes it possible for every student. And it's one of the great things, we're proud to work for Minnetoka, because it doesn't matter where you're from, what your background is, wherever. If you walk through the doors of Minnetoka schools, we're going to do whatever it takes to help every student rise. And so it's, you know, it's a gift to be able to actually work in a place like this. It really is.
You're here.
And my second comment is going to be less impactful after that, but I'm going to say it anyways. Kudos to getting some Packer stuff into the presentation as well.
Any other board members?
I'm just going to add, I always appreciate the detail with which you provide these reports. Over the past four years, I've learned a lot more about education finance than when I started. And I think understanding, especially those charts showing how we're able to layer in bonds over different years helps understand a lot of how we're able to find additional funds and resources to really put back into the classroom. And, you know, it takes, you're right, it takes a team. And so I appreciate you and your entire team, although I will point out that it does appear that one member of this team has, is a common factor in 50% of all of the districts who have ever had a AAA bond rating in the state of Minnesota. And we're all very grateful that you're still with us.
Well, thank you.
All right. I think we have reached the end of our agenda. Thank you very much.